Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Barbara Brenneman. I am Chair of the Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission, and I welcome you to our meeting of Monday, July 20, 2020. We'll open the meeting by doing a pledge of allegiance, by you joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening's agenda does not have a public hearing on it, so we do not have a call to immediately to new business. And the first item on business is Trump Incorporated, Three Johnson Avenue installation of a six-foot stockade fence along a portion of Hyde Road frontage.
Okay. What I do want to do is take care of the matter as to whether or not the commission feels a public hearing is warranted for this. It has been discussed in the correspondence from Attorney Decreschenzo.
I would say to the commissioners, I hope that you have read Shannon's memorandum on this item. This is not a public hearing, and there was a property owner who wanted correspondence issued. With an attorney's recommendation, that will not happen unless we change this from a...
New business.
Just new business to a public hearing. So that I would like to have some discussion about before we go forward with this.
Why don't we just go in order? It's going to be a little easier to... So we got it. We'll go in order of the commission members, if they have any comments on it or questions.
Let's start with Patrick. Do you have any comments on it, Patrick? Were you able to read Shannon's memorandum?
I did read it, yes. I do not have any comments. Actually, I may after I listen to the other commission members, but right now, no.
Okay. Mike Rabulis?
No comments or questions. I'm inclined to go with the recommendation of the attorneys.
Matt Pogson?
I believe that this has had some contentious reports in the past when there were some other zoning enforcement issues in the past, and this was something that the neighbors had issues with in the past. It might be a good idea to have the ability to find out what the issues are. I always like to hear from the public, and I think it's always important to hear from them. So I am leaning towards it being a public hearing, but I will obviously do whatever the commission feels is best.
Inez?
I am in agreement with Matt. My initial reaction was that we're here elected officials by our town residents, and if there is an issue that needs to be resolved or we need to weigh in on, I think it should be a public meeting.
Marcy?
One minute, unmute, sorry. So I do not... I guess I'm in with Matt and Inez. I think if it's the fairer way to do things, I agree we should do it. But we'll go with the commission on this.
Although you can't vote on it, I would like your opinion.
Did you ask for me?
Yep.
So my opinion is if the public would like to give their views on this, I think we should have a public hearing.
I don't think Keith's here. Scott Halsted?
I thought we said Scott wasn't here.
No, Scott's here, Keith is not.
Oh, okay. I wrote the wrong one down. Scott?
Scott Halsted, do you have any comments regarding this item? He was here.
God damn it.
Scott Halsted? Who's that? I don't know. All right. Patrick, do you have anything else to add after hearing everyone else?
No, I don't. I mean, it's pretty clear that most feel that we should have it, so...
And you all understand that we did notify the attorneys?
Half the time, this sound doesn't work on this thing.
Oh, Scott, we can hear you now.
Oh, now you can hear me.
Yeah. I just thought I'd let you know.
While I'm yelling about the sound not working?
Yeah.
I concur with everybody said about airing on the side of public hearing.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
So Shannon, in process, if they are... It looks like the majority of the commissioners feel that we should have a public hearing on this fence.
So what happens is, under Article 4, Section 12, for site plans, special permits, et cetera, I had made the determination that the matter was minor in nature and could come before you under new business. However, that decision needs to either be upheld or agreed to or overruled by the commission. So it would probably be prudent to take a vote on this. I know we took a... You know, asked for comments, questions, gave everybody a chance to ask any questions. But if the commission wants a public hearing, then we should take a vote to request that the public hearing, and at which point then there would be no discussion on this item tonight. And Trump will need to decide whether or not they are going to move ahead with this because they aren't obligated to install a stockade fence.
Right.
So they may opt that they don't want to go through that process of public notification and et cetera, at the expense of it. So... But that's certainly their choice at that matter, just as it's yours to, you know, make your decision. So I would suggest a motion and a vote to request a public hearing regarding this matter, and then obviously it would remove it from new business for this evening.
Do we have to make a motion to take it off the agenda as new business?
I don't think so because it's been acted on at that point. But we're saying it's not a new business. So we're saying it requires a public hearing, which would push it to September.
Okay. I need that motion, please.
I have a question. It's Inez St. James. So we're talking about one neighbor?
There has been one written correspondence that has been received by our office. But that's the issue. So the concern of the attorney is if we take one piece of written correspondence in on an item that is not a public hearing, we have in essence held an illegal public hearing that was not properly noticed and has not properly given others an opportunity to speak in favor or in opposition of what is being proposed. Whether or not anyone else would, I have no idea. But that was the attorney's position, is that if we take in one without having noticed a hearing, then we're technically holding an illegal public hearing.
And then taking this further, if Trump does not want to install a fence, there's nothing else that can be done?
In my opinion, they are zoning compliant at this particular point in time.
Thank you.
This is Marcy. So the possibility exists that they would just not put a fence at all if we ask for a public hearing, is what you're saying?
There's a possibility. I'm not really sure what they would choose to do.
Obviously, yeah. Okay. All right. So I think I'm going to change mine and say, why don't we not do a public hearing? That's my opinion.
Well, we still... One way or another, we need a motion. If you're going to take it off the agenda as new business, then you have to make it a public hearing. Somebody has to do that. Get the public hearing motion with a second, then we can discuss the motion.
But do we want to make it a public hearing? I'm confused.
That's what you have to decide.
But if we decide we don't want to make it a public hearing, should there be a...
Then we'll go ahead this evening as new business.
Patrick Carrier, can we just unofficially vote right now? Like, do it? So again, I would say no public hearing.
So I need a motion and a second, please, Patrick. So you can make a motion, and we need someone to second it, and then we will do a roll call vote?
The verbal communication was that you wanted a public hearing. So the only way we can either vote that up or down is with a motion and a second, and then we'll vote.
Right. But do we have to do that to keep that... I mean, right now, it is still new business, right? I mean, we did that unofficially. We didn't vote on it.
I need a motion either way to say we're going to have a public hearing or not. So I need that item addressed first. So it's either a motion that says, yes, we would like a public hearing or not. It's better to do it in the positive, and then it's either approved or denied. So it's better to say... To make the motion for the public hearing, so the motion is made in the positive tense, and then vote accordingly as to whether or not you agree with that motion or want to move ahead with that motion.
Okay. This is Matt Pogson. I'm going to make a motion that we have a public hearing for the Trump application.
We need a second, please?
Inez St. James, second.
All right. Now, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any more discussion about it?
This is Matt Pogson. I have a question for Shannon. If this was to, let's say, go for a public hearing, and Trump decided to rescind it, would you be able to tell them or bring it up again as a new business?
Not much at this point.
In the future, not as a public hearing?
It's at Trump's discretion. So they could, if they decided to continue to pursue options regarding screening along this corridor. And this is any application. It's at the applicant's discretion.
This is not a site plan approval. I mean, this is nothing that was commanded.
So I'm sorry, Matt. I think I interrupted you. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I haven't seen the plans enough or really understand the whole what's going to be done other than putting up a fence to know what changes are being made. So I'm still going to err towards the side of having a public hearing, but at the same time, I'm not sure how much of a change is occurring. But I also don't know if we can have any discussion about that right now, especially if we are going to have a public hearing. So it makes it... It's kind of like a catch-22 on that.
So it's solely... All the information was in the agenda review, and it was in the supporting documents. It's a six-foot stockade fence that's being placed along the Hyde Road frontage.
I do understand that. I'm just curious if it changes any of the existing requirement of the buffering that was required when that first was approved?
No.
Yeah. Inez, you're... I think we're going to let the motion sit because this is going to go down a...
Okay. That's what I was worried about.
One question is going to lead to another, to another.
Right.
I'm not inclined to do that.
I understand.
Yep.
Mike Rabulis, do you have any comments?
No comments. I stick with what I previously said.
Comments before we vote? Marcy?
No, thank you. Yeah, I'm all set, too.
Okay. Let's just vote.
Okay. I'm going to call for a vote that the Trump applications be forwarded to become a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to have a roll call vote, please. Patrick?
No.
Mike?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Inez?
Yes.
Marcy?
No.
I'm sorry?
No. No, no.
And...
So you?
I am going to vote in favor.
For a public hearing?
No, no. For the... No.
Well, that's... So the motion was for the public hearing.
No, I'm going to vote against it.
So you're voting against.
So the vote is four to two?
Correct. So the motion fails to not...
It will go on to new business.
It will go on to new business.
So now we can talk about...
Well, now I can have the applicant present because the applicant is on the phone.
Okay.
So, John Misca, I believe you are with us?
Yep.
All right. I have... Actually, you can see the site plan up in front of you. If you could give a brief explanation regarding the installation of the stockade fence, that would be helpful, and then we'll open it up to questions from the commission.
Thank you all very much for consideration. I've got some notes here. It's going to be brief. I'll go through... And I just introduce myself again. It's John Misca, I'm the Environmental Health and Safety Manager.
John, can you move your microphone up so that it's closer to your mouth?
Is that a little better?
It's a little better, yep.
Okay. Okay. My name's John Misca. I'm the Environmental Health and Safety Manager for Trump, headquartered at 111 Hyde Road in Farmington. Of course, we also have the Johnson Avenue campus. And briefly, we're requesting approval to install the six-foot solid infill fence and recognize that there are some gaps in the lower portion of the property line screening block where the Trump building at Three Johnson Avenue can be seen facing south from Hyde Road in the vicinity of the New Britton Avenue intersection. And years past, we've attempted to supplement this, the lower area of this natural barrier with smaller plantings under the evergreen and deciduous trees that are there, the natural buffer, and it's been less than successful. Part of it's sunlight, road salts, lack of water. But we haven't been able to sustain plantings in the lower section of the upper. Additionally, there has been some tree trimming performed by EverSource and the town in recent years. And this is incremental. It's not... I don't consider it to be a tremendous amount or incremental loss. There's just some loss of the buffer density and depth. We recently expanded the parking for the Johnson Avenue side of the campus. And as part of that, we addressed the buffer by planting 21 white pines. And this is a year ago now, so these pines have taken well, and they're already up, some of them as much as 12 feet high. We've also planted 11 blue and green spruce that are in the six-to-eight foot range now to build up that buffer, particularly where it's from across the New Britton Avenue in Hyde Road. We've also installed irrigation on these trees to make sure that these are sustainable, that these do grow, and they are doing well. That bank is rather steep and sandy, and it's from the Hyde Road elevation down to the parking lot, so a little over 20 feet. I believe it's a little over 20, 21-foot difference in grade. So it's significant. So we had to do some work to make sure that those white pines and the spruces take. As we do expect that those are going to be doing a nice job of closing up some of the buffer.
Thank you.
And these can be in the photos that... In part of the attachment, some of these, as they were installed... There is a photo there. It's on page three. It shows these plants. And again, a year later, with all of the landscape in complete, they are... They have been doing well.
You're talking about...
Yeah, there's a separate file with photos.
The photos. There we go.
Yeah. So it's the third one that shows those, the plantings. Now, as far as the fence goes, we believe the black color that we proposed would be the least obtrusive and distracting in this area as it's typically shaded. And it also, on our part, would require less effort to maintain the clean, professional appearance, which our company is very adamant about that we maintain this. So we've selected Eagle Fence, which is a trusted contractor of ours. We've used them on a number of occasions. And they've recommended a particular brand, Illusions brand, which we've included that information for this application. They've assured us that this is a very high-quality, commercial-grade fence, and it's... They've recommended both for its structural integrity and also its color retention. Now, we have been working with... Rather closely with Bruce and Shannon to identify both the effective... The most effective landscaping to improve the buffer density long term. Along with the proposed fence as an expedient and somewhat effective solution for the short term to close up those gaps that you could see through from Hyde Road down to our building parking lot. So we fully expect that we will maintain the plantings that we've installed as long in addition to this fence. And within a few years, we fully expect that these white pines, and then eventually the spruces, will do a great job of closing up any of the openings that may be seen in the buffer, especially since these evergreens now are going to be a great job of screening year-round in addition to the deciduous trees this time of year. So that's the brief explanation. So I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration, and certainly will answer any questions that you may have.
I do not have any questions.
Mike?
Could we just see the color of the fence that was going to go in again?
It is a solid black.
Solid black, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Matt?
Will any vegetation be taken down to put the fence up, or will everything remain that is there existing?
It is fully our intention to keep everything that is there to do as little disturbance as possible when installing this fence.
Okay. Other than that, no. I have no other questions at this time. Thank you.
Inez?
No new questions.
Marcy?
No questions. Thank you.
This is Barbara Brenneman. I have a question on the installation that you've done with the evergreens. Do you anticipate that they will take up the airspace that's visual 10 years from now?
We expect those... The white pines, based on our experience with these and the landscaper's recommendation, the white pines should be upwards of 30 feet. And they've already grown... Several of these have put on a foot and a half already just in one year. So we do expect those to close up some of that gap from the Hyde Road side, keeping in mind that we've got that 20-foot drop. But the white pines are approximately halfway down the embankment. So at a full grown, maybe in a five-to-10-year range, we certainly expect those to do a great job of closing up some of those openings. The spruce is slower growing, but longer lasting, and also some variety in terms of the...
Texture, yeah.
The texture, especially, yes. And so we expect that combination to do very nicely in that five-to-25-year range.
Now, again, it's Barbara Brenneman. Am I right in assuming that your fence installation will be approximately at the same distance and location of the post and cable fencing that's there now?
Yes. As a matter of fact, that... In those photos, I believe it's page six, seven, and eight shows where that fence location will be.
Right.
Maybe it's five. There's one where you can see the markout on the road. It may be the next photo. There you go. You can see the markouts there. That's where the fence will begin, and it will continue in a westerly direction where that current wire fence is. So in fact, we think it'll be just a bit in from that, just behind that. That fence will come out, and we will replace that fence with the solid fence.
So the post and cable fence is going to be removed?
Yes, it will, in that section. It does extend beyond that, and we're going to leave that in place beyond that, further east. It does continue. But where the solid fence is, we will remove that post fence.
Directly opposite New Britton Avenue, is that post and cable fence coming down?
That will be replaced. The new fence is approximately four feet to easterly, to the left of that tunnel. That's where it will be.
I just see the cable and post fence as a safety fence. Somebody coming New Britton Avenue, making that turn.
It's not crash. It's not an impact.
It is not. It is just a wire fence.
Because it wouldn't hold back a vehicle?
No. It's not crash... It's not a crash-rated fence.
Okay.
No. It was there, I believe initially it was installed to help deter trespassing.
We were requested two years ago to repair a fence that had been there. It was a barbed wire fence, and we replaced it with this fence.
The cable fence, yeah.
With the cable, yes. It's a wire fence.
Yeah, it is not a crash fence.
No.
Any other commissioners have any other questions? Is there anything else Trump would like to add before I move on to a vote?
At this point, I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, as usual, we have decided that we will be voting new business as it actions. So we need a motion on the Trump installation of a six-foot stockade fence along a portion of Hyde Road frontage.
Yeah, this is... Yeah, this is Patrick Carrier. I make a motion to approve the installation of a six-foot stockade fence along a portion of Hyde Road frontage.
I need a second, please.
Mike Rabulis, second.
Thank you. Any other comments? Does everyone know what we're voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to Miss Porter School at Three Porter Road. Well, I have two addresses here. I have Three Porter Road, and I have 48A Main Street.
And which one is it? Rich Higley corrected me that it is Three Porter Road.
All right. So let's... On the memorandum, it states 48A Main Street. It's not 48A Main Street. It's number Three Porter Road. A site plan approval to expand existing dance barn.
And I think we've got...
So is somebody here from Miss Porter School?
Mm-hmm. I'm here. Good evening.
Good evening, can you all hear me?
Yes, sure can.
Great. This is Katie Bradley. I'm here tonight representing Ms. Porter School. And we have submitted an application for a site improvement at 3-Porter Road. It is our current dance barn. It's located behind 44 Main Street on, on Main Street and our crisp gym on Garden Street. Currently, it is really a barn. It is, we teach dance classes in there. It does not have a bathroom or storage or custodial closet or a dressing room. And this 14-foot, approximately 62-foot-long addition off of the north side of the building that faces Porter Road would add that storage, dressing, restroom and custodial closet and a vestibule to this facility. Currently, the students leave this building to go to our crisp gym to use the restrooms and to get a drink of water. And it's time and we would like your permission to put this approximately 860-square-foot addition on the side of the building. During this renovation, we would also be improving the ADA accessibility. The bathrooms will be ADA accessible at compliant. We'll also improve the handicap parking and accessibility from the parking area. Currently, there's three steps up to the entrance of the building and working with Jon Stewart as an architect, a landscape architect, and Lovero and ERA Architects, we have come up with a plan. I hope you can see it on here. We've moved the parking, okay, that's the dance barn where the hand just was. And that's the current parking. We do not lose any parking in this plan. We just shift some of the peninsulas and we are going to regrade so that the entrance and that new path into that building where Shannon's moving her hand right there, will all be at the same grade. So, there will be no need for steps and it will be integrated into the landscape. We will also be updating our HVAC and adding AC. And currently, this building doesn't have any plumbing connected to it at all, but we will, we have worked out a plan with Macri and Associates and they will be bringing water from our crisp gym complex under the driveway and we will connect to that existing sewer that is in the building. Have any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Patrick?
No, I do not have any questions.
Mike?
I like how you guys have made the circle there. That's definitely an improvement for parking and everything. Definitely, it would seem to be a needed addition for the students. The material on the outside, does it completely match the existing dance barn?
Yes, it will be a wood or wood-like clapboard. As you see in the front here, there's a storefront window system right where the arrow is right now. And that is an aluminum-clad wood system to let in a lot of light and pretty much announce that that is the entrance to the building. The gray stripes that you see in that picture, those are clappers that are the same color as the existing building. And then the little windows above are windows that add light to the bathrooms and the dressing room. And then at the far end, I think there's a better drawing that's actually more of an architectural sketch. Keep going there, that one. So, in the center, up above the clappers are windows. And then to the far right, that is a faux wood system. It's cedar lattice to mimic the other side, which is actually the aluminum storefront window. So, this is just a design element on the far right and, but, and the aluminum-clad storefront windows on the left.
Okay, thank you. It looks great.
Thank you.
Matt?
No questions at this time.
Inez?
No, no questions. Sounds exciting, just like your dining hall improvements. I love that you're taking care of this special property in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy?
I have no questions. It looks great.
Scott?
No questions, thank you.
John?
No questions.
Katie, it's Barbara Brenneman. I have one question. The chimney, is that an existing chimney or a new chimney?
So, the chimney on the right is an existing brick chimney. And what we're doing over here on the left is we are working with a way, we're trying to work out a way to, to put some, to hide the connection of the pipes for the HVAC. Lower to the left outside, and you'll see that on the site plan drawings somewhere in there. We are going to have some compressors. I don't think it's in this one.
I'm not sure.
Behind the building and they're recessed down below a hill. Yes, they're in that area. And so, we looked at putting them under the building and we looked at putting them over by the parking lot. And after moving them around several times, realizing that this was the most out-of-the-way place that our students and visitors, no one really walks back behind that corner of the building. So, it made the most sense to put the compressors there for the AC. And so, the chimney is a way to get the ducts up the outside of the building and then they'll enter into the, it's a very open ceiling. And so, we'll have exposed ductwork, commercial but attractive and fits the interior of the building. But that is a faux chimney to hide this ductwork.
Okay, thank you. So, it'll be heated and air-conditioned?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Katie?
We have just wanted to do this for so long and we're very excited to finally have the opportunity and our trustees are supporting it. But it has been sorely needed and the students will be out of their mind happy to have bathrooms and a dressing room and drinking fountains in their dance studio, so.
Well, I bet. I have, I did find another question. Katie, it's Barbara Brenneman. Do you have to go before the historic district for the site plan?
Yes, I'm actually scheduled to see them tomorrow at 4:00.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Okay, commissioners, we'll move on to a vote. We need a motion and a second to approve Ms. Porter School's 3-Porter Road Site Plan Approval to Expand Existing Dance Barn.
It's Inez St. James. I make the motion to approve the expansion of the existing dance barn at Ms. Porter School at 3-Porter-
Road.
Road. Thank you. It wasn't coming to me.
I need a second, please.
This is Marcy Schwartz and I second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Sign Pro Incorporated, 81 Spring Lane, sign application to replace the monument sign at 81 Spring Lane, please.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Becker from Sign Pro Inc. I believe Luke Sarr is also in attendance, if you have any questions for him. This is pretty basic. Sarr Corporation has, have come to us and requested to refresh their monument sign. We're adding non-illuminated panels as shown on the drawing here on both sides. Not really sure what more to add to that.
Material?
They're aluminum tube frame panels with printed vinyl graphics.
So, all you're replacing is the sign, not the monument? Correct?
I believe they, I believe they replaced the monument already. So, we are just adding the sign panels to the monument that is there.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have questions? You read your memorandum? Patrick, Mike?
Using the same lighting, microbulb, ask them.
Yes.
No further questions?
Matt?
No questions.
Inez?
No questions.
Marcy?
No questions.
Scott?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
Okay, anything to add from the applicant?
No, thank you. I don't know if Mr. Sarr would like to add anything?
I did see him on. I don't know if he still is.
Nothing to add at this moment.
Okay, thank you. To the commissioners, I need a motion to approve a Sign Pro Incorporated application for 81 Spring Lane, which is not signed for Sarr Corporation as presented.
This is Matt Hogson and I move to approve the sign application as presented.
Need a second, please?
Inez St. James, second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further comment?
No.
Everyone know what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laurentano signs, 79 Main Street, Unionville directional signs for Ion Bank.
Hi, Katie, can you hear me?
We can, yeah, barely.
My name's Allison Nibison with Laurentano Sign Group. And I'm proposing three single-sided, non-illuminated directional signs in the plaza for Ion Bank. They're aluminum panels, black graphic.
It's super hard to follow.
I don't know, can you get closer to the microphone, Allison, or maybe speak up just a little bit?
Let me try calling in, maybe that'll help. Is that her talking?
I think it's her dialing.
Yeah, I'm calling and if she's there, help. Can you hear me better now?
Just speak into your mic for us, please.
Can you hear me better?
I'm still hearing you from your computer. Which, what's the last four digits of the phone number you just called in on? Yeah, you muted your computer, I can't hear you at all. What's the last four digits of the phone number you called in on? It's 6135, all right. Try that again now. Can you hear me? There you go.
There you go, that's better.
All right.
What is that?
Turn your, you gotta turn your computer volume way off, like shut your computer volume off completely. All right, now give it a shot. Zoe, can I get your help?
Oh, that's funny.
Where'd she go?
Look for Zoe. Her daughter, I'm assuming, to get her help. What's the computer?
I'm just happy my dog is not barking right now.
That's okay, we could hear you on the phone. I just needed your computer volume shut off completely because we were getting feedback between the two. So, the quality on the phone was perfect. I just couldn't, with the feedback, it gets distorted.
So, talk to us on your phone.
All right, how was that?
That's good.
That's perfect. Oh, good, thank goodness.
All righty.
All right, so-
Now, keep going.
The proposal is for three, single-sided, non-illuminated directional signs in the back of the bank when you come in to direct traffic as wayfinding directional signs. If you go to the site plan page, you'll see where each one is located as you pull into the property. That should be showing on your screen now, the site plan showing with- So, A is for drive-up banking, pointing you towards the left. And then the B sign is for drive-up banking and ATM directional. And then sign C is for exit.
Okay. Commissioners have questions? Nobody?
This is Marcy, so I'm looking at what's Main Street. So, that's the entrance and the bank looks like it's on the left, but I have to think of it on the right when you pull in to. I am- Am I-
Yeah, so this is for the new bank, Marcy, that's gonna be in Unionville next to Kelly Nixon Reeve Attorney Law Offices.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, I apologize.
No problem, it's the Unionville location, so it's the one that just started construction.
All right, gotcha.
Yep. All right.
So, they're three feet, this, yeah. Looks fine. All right, I need, if there are no concerns, I need a motion to approve Laurentano signs, 79 Main Street, Unionville directional signs for, three directional signs for Ion Bank as presented.
This is Matt Hogson. I move to approve the signs for 79 Main Street for the directional signs for the bank, for Ion Bank.
Need a second, please?
Inez St. James, second.
Thank you. Any other concerns? Everybody understand what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Moving on, number five. Farmington Historic District Commission Review and Comment on the Study Report from the Farmington Historic District Commission Study Committee.
Yep, I'll be discussing this one for everyone this evening. So, this is Shannon Rutherford, Assistant Town Planner, for the record. The Farmington Historic District Study Committee, along with assistance from Lisa Johnson, our town historian. Actually, Lisa has written the report and pulled the documentation together. Members of the Farmington Historic District Commission have worked with Lisa as far as securing these properties. So, these are all owners of properties that have approached the commission requesting addition of their property to the historic district. So, this really is the first step in a couple of months- So this really is the first step in a couple of months-long process in order to have these properties formally added to the district. So, the study report is finished and it's draft state. You folks will review it, and we're looking for a positive recommendation back to the Farmington Historic District and the Town Council. So they will take official action on it. In addition, the report will be submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office for their review. And we will get our recommendation from them as well, a positive recommendation from them, and then it moves ahead to a public hearing with the Farmington Historic District Commission. And then each of the property owners will receive a ballot to vote on the addition of their property into the district. This ballot is done by the Town Clerk's Office, and is very programmed and regimented in what's required in the Connecticut General Statutes. And then upon affirmative vote, it then goes to Town Council to be formally adopted, and then the town ordinance ratified to include these properties. So there are multiple opportunities, again, these homeowners have voluntarily requested to have their properties added. So typically, it's a positive experience all the way around, but in, should there be a change apart on their, their part, and they decide that this isn't something that is right for them or their property, they have multiple opportunities in which to withdraw their request at the historic district hearing, at the time that they cast their ballot to vote, obviously would be another, and then finally at the Town Council hearing. So, again, hopefully you had an opportunity to read the report, Lisa puts a great deal of time and effort into these, and it's always an interesting read through our own town history, and they're very well-written, and the photographs are nice of the homes as well. At this point, we're looking for a positive referral to, back to the Historic District Commission to hold that hearing and to Town Council. Obviously, if there's any questions, I will certainly do my best to answer any questions that anyone has.
Questions, Commissioners? It's a, it's a very strict, very professionally maintained process to install these properties into the historic district, and the town is very careful about the process. But they are asking for a positive referral from us, that we don't have a problem with this, to the Historic District Commission and the Town Council. So we need a motion to that effect. All we're doing is referring it.
MicroBolus make a motion for a positive referral on this document.
Matt Pogson, I second it.
Is the motion in a second? Does everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, number six, Jason LaFleur, 319 Scott Swamp Road, accept an application for special permit to raise up to 10 hens and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of September 14th, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
Somebody can knock that out, I'm good.
I'm sorry? What?
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to accept application for special permit to raise up to 10 hens, to schedule a public hearing.
For September 14th, 2020, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, for September 14th, 2020.
Ina St. James, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion, I'm sorry, abstention? Motion carries, thank you. 244 Main Street LLC, 244, 240, 244, 248 Main Street, accept an application for special permit, site plan and waiver for expansion of office, personal service and retail business buildings, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of September 14th, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
Ina St. James, I make the motion to accept application for special permit, site plan and waiver for expansion of office, personal service and retail buildings, and schedule public hearing date of September 14th, 2020 for 244 Main Street LLC at 240, 244, 248 Main Street.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Patrick Carrier, a second.
Thank you. Does everyone know what we're voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to old business, with, this is the Metro Realty Group, the text amendment. I hope that all of you have read this, because there's been some work put into this. The applicability, the purpose, the procedure, everything has been forwarded to you in order to end this year of, this is our last meeting of the season, so we'd like to accomplish this under the old business, we, I think we all know what we're talking about here. I would ask Shannon, who has been an instrumental part in getting us to this point with, with new information, to explain where we are with this.
Do we want a, a motion and a second to open discussion?
Before?
Yeah, before I start. Closed, we should have a motion before discussion.
A motion to, oh-
To open discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, what, what we're being, what I'm being told is, in order to go forward and discuss this openly, because this was originally a public hearing, we need to have a motion and a second to vote.
This is Matthew Pogson, I move to approve the amendment, the text amendment to the special innovation zone, and we can discuss the conditions after a second and all that.
I need a second, please?
Ina St. James, second.
Thank you. Now I'm gonna hand over the microphone to Shannon, because she has done all the hard work, I have-
Sorry, no.
Leaned on her to make sure it got done right.
So, everyone should have received the letter from Robert DiCrescenzo, update Kelly's Felicity is our, our land use attorney, assisting with all land use boards for the town of Farmington. So, there's a very detailed letter that Bob put together regarding the request, and so you folks know what went to, went to him. The original text for the floating zone, as well as the proposed text, the meeting minutes, and obviously I had a conversation with him to explain our sequence of events and what has transpired, and what, what was being asked at the last hearing, which was a question that came up regarding, basically, can we amend the zoning regulation, the, can we make an amendment to the text amendment, the floating zone that was put before us? And basically, what Bob came back with, if you look at the very last paragraph, he summarizes the two pages of text for us very nicely. And you, you are within your rights to amend the height requirement of this proposed text amendment. In the body of it, it gets a little more specific as to the why, but in essence, it's your regulation, and if you want to make an amendment to what's been put forth, in his legal opinion, it's your right to do so. You will notice that he does take the time in the first two, three, four paragraphs to discuss the fact that because this is a floating zone, it's a, again, we're back to the term legislative action, and you're not obligated to approve anything that you don't like the site plan for, or the site elements for. So these site elements that have been proposed are guidelines, but they're not mandates, as they would be, say, in the B1 zone, and if someone is meeting the parking count, meeting the setback, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and we hit all the checkboxes, you're obligated to approve it. This is different because it goes with a zone change, and you're not obligated to approve a zone change if you don't feel any element of it is appropriate. So that really is what item one is, that the commission may require an applicant seeking a zone change to the voting zone to propose buildings of less than four stories under the current language of the draft amendment. So even though we're allowing the maximum of four stories, 45 feet, that's exactly what he's saying, is that it's your discretion as to whether or not that's what you feel is appropriate in any given location where that zone is being proposed to land. However, he goes on to, to say and explain that you also have the right, that the commission may revise the amendment to provide a different height standard to different eligible parcels within the geographic areas eligible. And that by doing so, if you, whether it was to the text amendment, or if you require different height requirements for a particular application, again, back to item one, you're not attaching an impermissible condition to the floating zone by requiring a height limitation. So, so that's, you're not, again, back in item one, you're not opening yourself up, or the board, future boards, to potential litigation by requiring a height limit that is less than the four stories, if it should be landed in a particular location. So, based on all that, and understanding the conversation that took place two weeks ago, we have this from Bob, I also felt that it was prudent to put together possible alternate wording for you, so that was included in my agenda review, that it went out to all of you. Was just a suggestion, because I know it was brought up, that perhaps we figure out a way to work in a five, six vote, but also not necessarily wanting to limit and hinder all areas where this could land. There seemed to be a concern where this was adjacent to single-family residential zones. So, I took a shot at crafting something that got the commission headed in that direction. If at the end of the day, the commission feels that really, regardless of the latitude they have with a floating zone, they want an extra protection regarding the height, this is a suggestion, option, that the commission could take. I did further ask Bob regarding this, and I specifically asked, because I'd forgotten to ask him when we were speaking, so I did it via email, that if you do decide to change the wording, whether this should be done as a separate vote, and then do the amendment as a whole, or if everything could be done together as one motion. And he said his, his preference is that if you're gonna change any of the wording, that the commission vote to change the particular wording, and then do a vote to change the, to accept the text amendment with that amended wording then. So there would be two votes if you're opting to change the wording with respect to the height element of this regulation. And with that, I'm, I think I've said everything I need to say, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them and help add clarity to anything that's needed.
To the Commissioners, this is Barbara, what this really does is kind of respond to the commission, some of the Commissioner's concerns about adjac, buildings adjacent to residential property, and, and being able to control that, and only approve it with a five, six vote. I think, Matt, this is something that you wanted, and I think other Commissioners agreed with you. But as Shannon just said, in order to put this in place, the first thing we have to do is to amend what we've been presented as a special innovation floating zone to include this. So that has to be the first motion, to amend the presentation that we have. Before we do that, go on to say, once we have amended the presentation, then we can take a vote on the application for the text amendment, for the special innovation floating zone. But it has to be sequential.
Yep.
So let's have a conversation, how do you feel about this change to the zone, and get some conversation going.
If we go in order.
Patrick?
I don't see a reason to change it, we have, you know, the way it's written, when it comes back, we have all, we can say no to anything, we're not held to anything, so I don't see why we would limit it, or make it more difficult.
Okay. Mike?
I would just echo what I said the past two meetings, and I don't feel as though there's a need for a, for a wording change on this, I don't feel necessary.
Okay. Matt?
Shannon, could you share with us on your screen the changes that you made, because I'm having a tough time. I'm, I'm going through all the paperwork that you've sent us, and I'm looking for your verbiage that changed what we would be conditioning, or what our change would be. Do you have that to share with us?
You're gonna-
Under old business.
Ask me for the one thing, I don't think I have down here.
Isn't it here?
No. Yeah, but I, it's there, but I don't think I have the agenda review, I don't think I copied the agenda review over, because I had-
So it's in your agenda review, that's what the specific, alright, I have all my stuff up.
Yeah, it's in the agenda review, I'm hap, I can read it, but it's, I think it's, I don't know, I'm a visual. So it's in the agenda review, under Metro Realty, so it's on page three of my agenda review. But no, I don't have it here on this screen, Matt, I'm sorry.
Okay, not a problem. I'm gonna look for that, I, I know we got a couple emails, so I'm, I'm sorting through which email it was in.
Yep, so it's the agenda review that was sent on Friday at roughly 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
That's the sign one, the sign agenda, ah, there it is.
Okay.
So, my, I, I understand, I do totally understand where Mike and Pat are coming from, and I understand their thinking, which is that we can, you know, void this, we can, you know, not approve anything, basically, if it comes into this area. I'm thinking along the lines of the way that many of our other regulations are worded, where height and regulations like that are a five, six vote. In hindsight, I probably should have even suggested it for when we were doing the riverfront area, because the height is something that definitely changes the character of an area. And in the riverfront, that floating zone area, that doesn't have as much of a residential neighborhood around it, there's a little bit here and there, but not really. And in this case, however, we have a circumstance where it does have a budding neighbor, well, at least it could potentially have a budding neighbors that are residential areas. And in that case, I think it's important that we have the ability to have a little stronger opinion on the height and the regulation of the height. And I am reading over what- And I am reading over what Shannon wrote here, and I think exactly what we, what I was hoping for. It would be, I, I had kind of thought about it a little bit and written down something that said the five, or thirty-six foot height, rather, with the three stories, and then a five, six vote for anything higher than that, but I think that what Shannon wrote looks as if it covers the same condition or the same concern as I have anyway. Besides, I have other concerns about this regulator, this change as well, but the reality is that with any change comes some concerns, and I think really something that we have to be very cautious, or future commissions need to be cautious of, but this is one that I think we at least can try to preemptively have a little bit more control over. So I just, I'm trying to explain myself. I know that there's at least two commissioners who feel strongly that it's not necessary, and I just would like to explain my position on that. And I think we'd be good if we went along with what Shannon proposed here. So that's all.
Okay. Mar, Inez?
Yes. I also received the language, and I thank you, Shannon. I feel like maybe we should read the language that was proposed or is being proposed.
Sure. I'll read it into the record since I authored it. So it was in the agenda review and as written in the agenda review, what I wrote is, "To that end, I offer the possible alternate wording for your review and consideration. Height: Buildings shall not exceed four stories or forty-five feet in height, period. Developments contiguous to single-family residential zone, parentheses, excepting Yukon Hospital Parcels, close parentheses, shall require a five, six vote for building heights of four stories or forty-five feet, semicolon, otherwise these buildings shall not exceed three stories or forty feet, period."
Thank you. I feel that this language is important, although the document preserves the public hearing approving individual projects, I, I'm glad that that's staying initially, I didn't think so. I think what happens in small towns, not just Farmington, is once development starts, that's when people notice, right? And sitting briefly on the commission, when the Munson Development or Munson Road, that's when people notice, you know, tall building right next to their home. I feel that we need to preserve neighborhoods. I think the whole idea behind the zone is great, but we're still a small town, and I feel that it's important to preserve the positive things about the small town. I think this language should be incorporated.
Thank you. Marcy?
Yeah, I'm definitely feeling more comfortable with this innovation zone and its value, but I do feel like if we can put a little bit more, and it doesn't seem like much in terms of height, then I, I am absolutely okay with it.
Scott? Opinion?
No, sorry. I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The public hearing was closed, so we can't, it's just, it's just the folks.
You guys, Scott, John can't comment.
It's just the folks that are going to be voting. Sorry about that, guys.
I apologize.
So, Barbara, just you.
All right, we've had conversation. Is anything, anybody else want to add?
You're the only one.
I don't have any comments.
Okay, that's fine.
I take it as presented.
Okay. So if it's something that we feel strongly that we, that needs to be added, then we need a motion to modify, to, to make an amendment to the height portion of the regulation as it had been proposed, so.
Shannon, this is Matthew Pogson, and I would like to make an amendment to the zoning regulation for the height section. Would you like me to read verbatim again?
She, you know what, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Matt. Yeah, let's go ahead and read it, please.
Okay. I'd like, I'd like the text to be amended, the height section to be amended, where buildings shall not exceed four stories or forty-five feet in height, developments contiguous to a single-family residential zone, except in the Yukon Hospital Parcels, shall require a five, six vote for building heights of four stories or forty-five feet, otherwise these buildings shall not exceed three stories or forty feet.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a second.
In that St. James, second.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Okay.
Before we vote?
And I, we're going to do a roll call vote, folks, because we need to be really clear on this.
Patrick?
Patrick, we need your vote.
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Inez?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Barbara, yes.
Okay. Okay, so the amendment to the height portion of the regulation passes, and now we then go back to Matt's original motion, which opened discussion for us, which was to approve the text amendment for the special innovation, innovation floating zone.
As amended.
It'll be as amended now.
That's the motion we need now, please.
Matt, do you want to modify your motion so that it's as amended?
Yes. This is, this is Matt Pogson. I modified my motion to include the current amendment and condition that we just made.
In that St. James, second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Whoa, 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 we can have a conversation now, it, now you're, so we had a conversation just about the height. So let's, is there's any other discussion regarding this?
I thought we went through that before.
Well, we have, but I make sure, right? Give anybody an opportunity, so.
Does anybody have concerns about anything else in this floor? Hearing none. We're going to do a roll call vote on this one also. Patrick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt? Inez?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Barbara? Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate everyone's patience in working through this.
Well, thank you to Shannon for expediting it as well as it could have been done. Thank you. I appreciate that hard work.
All right.
Let's go back to planner's report.
Planner's report. We got one more, and Mr. Patrick Domon has been very patient, waiting his turn. Hang on, I just want to get the right papers with the right thing here. Okay. Okay. So Patrick's on the line, so the owner of the property is on the line if there's any questions, but really this is my question to you. The owner of the property is requesting to convert the first, sorry, the two first-floor office spaces of sixteen Brick Walk Lane to two one-bedroom apartments. The building was approved in September two thousand and thirteen with two two-bedroom units on the second floor and two one-bedroom units and two office spaces on the first floor. All the meeting minutes and everything had been provided to you. It was quite extensive as the hearings took place over multiple meetings. At the end of the day, where the request is to change an office use to residential use, it's residential use had already been approved, so it's not a new special permit use being added to this property. It's a less intense use, and my intent was to allow this to proceed. So unless there is concern on the part of the commission requiring, or if you have questions even, as I said, the owner is on the phone, we can certainly add clarification to any of this if there's, if that's needed. But it's allowed to have this as an all-apartment building. It is less intense than an office building, and so there's not a parking, traffic, et cetera, demand that's generated for this, and there are no exterior changes that will be result to the building. This will all be interior changes, so.
Questions from the commissioners, you have any? Patrick, no. Mike? Matt? Inez? Nobody? Everybody's good?
Everybody's good.
I don't like that, this is so, go ahead. Is that any? Okay. Who was going to speak?
It's Marcy. I was just saying everybody's good, sorry.
Okay. No, that's good. Thank you, Marcy. That's all, it's good. Thank you.
My only question, this is Barbara, my only question is, what is the zoning of those buildings?
So it's in the Farmington Center, Farmington Village Zone, and apartments, whether as a single use or part of a mixed-use structure are permitted.
So it's not specific to the building, it's in the zone?
So it's permitted, so an apartment building with multiple is permitted as well as mixed-use. So what he, he originally proposed as a mixed-use was permitted, but this is also permitted. If he were to change everything to residential, it is permitted as well.
And in the future, if the need became warranted, could he take it back to office space? Because I think that's important to consider.
Yes, he can, because it was part of the original special permit use. So five, ten years from now, if the market changes.
Yep.
He can. Obviously, he'll come in for a building permit, so we'll know, and there'll be tenants and signs and et cetera.
Yep.
So the planning office will be made aware in order to accommodate that change.
Well, the only reason I ask it, Shannon, is because at that, that whole process was quite contentious. There was a lot of conversation. So I want to make sure everybody understands that it's allowable.
Right.
And that if the market warrants, he could bring it back to office space.
Correct, to the extent that it was approved the first time around.
Originally, right.
Right. So he couldn't have more office than what was approved originally.
Right.
Without coming back to the commission.
Not without public hearing, yeah.
Right. So, but he could go back, he, he's not relinquishing his rights to go back to having the same amount of office space that was originally approved.
Okay. Do we have to vote on this?
No, because I'm going to sign off on it. It's in front of us, so I don't believe.
Unless anybody has questions about it.
It's only if there was, right, it's only if there was an opposition, so this falls within, under my umbrella for sign-off, but I'm required to bring it to you folks to have this discussion and.
Any commissioners have any other comments?
This is Inez St. James. I'm comfortable with Shannon working with the applicant.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving on to the minutes. We have to approve the minutes of the July sixth, two thousand and twenty Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay. Okay, it's Inez St. James. I make the motion to approve the minutes from July sixth, two thousand and twenty Town Planning and Zoning Meeting.
May I have a second?
Marcy Schwartz, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstentions.
Motion carries. And at this point, I adjourn you to your August vacation, and we'll see you in September. Thank you for a great.
The first.
Barbara? Yes.
What's the first date that we are back? Just to.
September fourteenth. September fourteenth.
Thank you.
All right, excellent.
I say to all of you, I hope you realize there's a primary coming up, and try to get your people to vote. We're concerned that it's going to be a dead primary, so talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Enjoy, everybody.
Yes, you too. Thank you.
Bye.
No, hang on. I gotta end. Hang on, let me just stop the recording.